Awesome. All right, we'll call the December fourteenth regular council meeting to order. Ask the clerk to take a roll.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
DeVorek?
Present.
Anderson?
Here.
Sarchat?
Present.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have no additions or corrections. I take a motion, please.
So moved.
Again.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those in a public hearing. Ask the clerk if anyone has requested to speak tonight.
Yes, sir.
Moving on consent agenda. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Questions, discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving into business items. Item A, Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-three ordering construction of certain public improvements, fixing dates for public hearing and taking bids for the twenty twenty-one street repair project. Who's the lucky one speaking to this?
I can speak to it, Mayor. This Kathleen. Yeah, this is just a resolution setting a bid letting date for January twentieth at ten a.m. For the twenty twenty-one street repair project and then the public hearing on January twenty-fifth, we'll consider those bids and a potential award.
Excellent. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-four approving pay app number five, the amount of four thousand four seventy-nine twenty-five for the two thousand nineteen street repair project. Any questions, concerns, comments, or emotion to this?
So moved.
Again.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-five approving cooperative public service agreement with Polk County for the twenty twenty-one joint jurisdictional street improvements projects. Who's speaking to this?
I can, I can speak to it. We, we received in the mail, or I should say Chelsea received in the mail, this cooperative agreement with Polk County for some street overlays that they're intending to do in the next construction season. And in those areas, they have identified that, you know, some of these, their roads are abutting our city limits, and that's why they are requesting us to pay our share in those portions. And in the maps provided, you can see those areas. One is north of town, up along, not on Hug Drive, but to the, to the road going to the north, we have a little bit up there, and then on Forty-Fourth Street, we have some there. And then also south of town, we have some there. So anyway, you'll see that that's what they're asking for is just us to pay their fair share. This has been done in the past when they've been around in our area. And we will make that number work.
Perfect. Can I get a motion, please?
Before that, I'll make it here in a second, but Mike, just a micro level question, a macro level question. So we've done this in the past, you said, but as far as our, our specific needs, they fit in with the work going, and I already said fair share. So if it is our fair share, then that's what it is. But since we're talking about this, so that's the micro level question. Does it align with where our, our needs are? The macro, you know, we had the meeting with Polk County Public Works a couple of years ago, specific to, to Third. And I know there's been a bunch of work that, are you, are you good with where we're at on working with them and how that's been going from a, from a jurisdictional standpoint?
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm good with working. I'm good with working with Polk County. And, you know, I'm not going to say that we, we probably do have other areas identified that might be in worse condition. But we really don't, there's really no way for them to just pave half of the street, right? So they've identified it. It, it, they're not in the greatest of shape, so they do need the overlay, and there's really no easy way for us to say, no, we'll do our half later. It just, it really can't work that way. So they've identified it before we have. That's, that's really the only case. But I, I still believe in it, and I believe that this is a good project.
Okay. Okay. Then, then overall, so the macro question with the, the specific, I mean, just get the brass tacks up on a third. What's your perspective on how that's going?
On Third Street, yeah, they, they've completed it. They've painted it. So that's a done project. It, it is, I don't know if you're asking me about the, the surface, the overlay and how it ended up. But there is a few little bumps in it, and if you saw that they, they grinded some of those off the other day. But that road in the underneath, when they got to, to milling that off, it was pretty rough under there. And, but the overlays on it, it should last for a while, and that's exactly what we asked them to do. So. But we worked well together on that project also.
Okay. And, and that answers my question, I think. I like, you know, again, I don't remember how long it was, but they were going to do the overlay and then we would take over Third. And, and so that's where I was going. I was trying to ask it in a, in a Yeah. I want to fill in your own word there way, because I know that, you know, if you're good, I'm good, and I don't want to meddle there, because I know that, you know, even if it wasn't done perfectly, bigger government doesn't take kindly to smaller government thumbing their nose at them, so they'll get us one way or the other, and it is what it is. But if you're, if you're okay, then
They did fulfill their obligation on us taking over that roadway.
That's a, that's a very safe answer. Nice work out of you. Go ahead and make the motion to approve that resolution.
Second. Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-six approving cooperative public service agreement with Polk County for animal control services. Chief, I assume this is on you?
Yes, it is. In June of twenty seventeen, the city had initiated a, a contract with Polk County for their animal control services. Since then, the sheriff's office is taking that over for the county. And they are terminating all agreements they had in place and propose this new one to finish out this year, the rest of this fiscal year, and cost up through FY twenty-five, twenty-six. Some of the differences, we were paying per usage prior to this, and this would be kind of a flat rate unlimited usage throughout each year.
Mike, do you want to put kennels back at the Public Works building to take care of this?
No, this has been working perfectly since twenty seventeen.
I just wanted your opinion. That's all. Thanks.
Good. Thank you.
Anybody got questions or to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, sorry.
I know I'm forgetting somebody. Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Resolution twenty twenty dash one forty-seven approving termination of agreement with Big Creek Development L.C. Chelsea?
Yes, we were approached by Nat Properties. I know it's a different L.C. that's written in the termination agreement, but they are proposing to sell Outlaw Z and asked us to waive the requirement of the three thousand dollar fee associated that is to be paid in lieu of property taxes. So we have the development agreement with the developer to offer tax increment financing for TCI. We said that we would be in agreement to waive the three thousand dollars if the developer would waive the option to collect tax increment financing, and they would be willing to do so. So we are proposing a partial termination of agreement for plat five in TCI.
Questions, comments, concerns, or emotion?
Where, where is this financially, Chelsea? Do we, is it a break even, or?
It would honestly, it would be more money coming into the city. That three thousand dollar payment is not enough to cover the city's levy costs that we would get from properties. So yes, it, I, I honestly think it's a better deal for both the city and the developer.
Was the original intent of that payment for, for something specific, or I guess there's something changed that better, a better option that we weren't utilizing at the time it was set up?
It's my understanding that the development was going to be collecting taxes and a, a part of them were going to be rebated back to the developer. So we made this three thousand dollar per lot fee to be in lieu of collecting property taxes. Is that, I'm sorry, does that answer your question?
I, I think so. But the better, it doesn't matter, honestly. So that, I mean. Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Well, wasn't, then some of that money was an earmark for LMI? Originally?
Not the three thousand dollars, but we do have LMI set aside that we get from the county.
Okay.
I do think this is, like I said, a, a, a good development agreement. I think it's a good idea for the city to enter into this termination of agreement. Amy has prepared the documents. And like I said, I think this is a positive for, for both the city and the proposed new developer on the property.
Why is it deemed partial termination?
Because it's just for that outlot. So the whole development agreement will not be terminated for TCI, but just that outlot we would be collecting taxes off of.
Okay, and I read the legal description and all that, but I didn't find a map. Where is Outlot D?
Z.
It's in front of the
Where is it?
It's in front of the hotel.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Jenny. And was, there was that, I don't remember, was that originally? Well, the whole, the whole development was under TIF, wasn't it? Yeah, originally, yeah. Okay, it's all coming back to me now. Thank you. No more questions.
Can we get a motion on Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-seven?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Sidern Associates invoice for the October engineering services in the amount of twenty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat? Walters?
Abstain.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash nineteen hundred amending the subdivision ordinance. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Next item is an option to waive the third reading. Anybody wish to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And just a point of clarification on, on this, because it's a big thing, right? We haven't gotten anything more over the last couple of weeks than last, since the first approval on this.
No, sir.
Okay. I mean, it, again, I think we need to go ahead with this to get it done sooner rather than later. And it's been shared and on our website. And I don't know, we shared with, I know P and Z went through it. Did they have anything more in the final version? I guess I don't know if we've had a meeting since. I'll just second and shut up, I guess.
So move to that.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, Rob.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash two thousand adding a greeting ordinance. Take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is an option, again, to waive the third reading. Anybody interested to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash twenty-one hundred adding stormwater utility fee. Take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
DeVorek?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Sarchat?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, again, is an option, is to waive the third reading. Anybody care to make a motion?
Maybe a little less inclined based on the fact it's a fee, but that's my only thought. Yeah. I, I, that's just my thought. I don't know if everybody else concurs.
Yeah, it's a good point, Dave, because it doesn't affect the, the rollout.
Nope. Right. We'll just leave that one.
Okay. Everybody agreement on that? We'll move that to the January eleventh meeting for the third reading. Okay. Moving on, reports in particulars, mayor designations for twenty twenty-one. Chelsea?
You saw the last page in your packet. There was a rotation that was proposed. They can take a look at rotation and flow. So we took the neighborhood citizens group out of the rotation, not knowing what was happening with that committee. We can add it back in if you guys think that we will come to some sort of resolution with, with them, but for now, that one was out of the rotation schedule. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Looks good. So everybody knows where they're going in January. Just make sure you see where you're going, rotating on. Okay, uh, next is, uh, any other reports in particulars? We do have somebody who normally isn't showing her face, and I happen to see her down there at the bottom. So since she's normally only on a call, we'll call on her first tonight. Bridget, what do you have?
Thank you, Jason. That's correct. Usually I'm behind the scenes. Um, I wanted to have my face on here, though, and tell all of you involved, Public Works, Fire Police, the girls in City Hall that filtered lots of questions. And then, of course, my wingman, Jason with Parks, thank you for the lighted parade. This will be the first event in two and a half years that I've been here that I received zero negative comments for. So.
I said the same thing at the Parks meeting, Bridget.
So that was wonderful. Um, that being said, the Saturday after the parade, I was in the office and my phone rang and I answered it, and it was a woman on the phone. She's lived here twenty years, has two kids in elementary school, and was crying on the phone thanking me for all the people that put that parade on because that was their family's Christmas. She has been laid off since March. They're on one income and not sure what Christmas will look like. I've had businesses reach out to me, asking me about families that usually are there, regulars, come in and eat every week, have not been seeing them for months, wondering if I can check on them, do those sort of things. So if you are able to support the businesses, please do. They are hurting and they are hoping to make it through the next six months. Some of them are literally hanging on by a string, if, if they'll make it through at all. And then, of course, always my plug to please help support the Comic Cupboard. We are giving out record numbers of food right now for families. So thank you all.
So Bridget, I want to piggyback on that real quick, because I did get the opportunity last Monday to go up and see the operation up there with Comic Cupboard and what they're doing. And I know you're working hard, and Dixie and everybody up there is doing a phenomenal job. So thank you to all that group. And if you get a chance to pop up there and see what they're doing, it is it's pretty crazy, honestly, when you really look at it and to talk about it and hear, and hear the stories from Dixie. So you guys are doing a wonderful job and you're just doing a great job. So good job with everything.
Yeah, and, and wow, first of all, I guess that's the good sobering reminder of the effects of decisions and lockdowns and all of those things. So, so thanks for sharing that and, and you know, especially this time of year, putting things in perspective, but it, it, I don't want to gloss over that. There's probably no way to, but I, I want to thank you, because I, I can't, I, I've not seen a job description, but welfare checks, I, I'm sure are not on there, your job, but it, it's a great example of, of what a great person you are, what a great job you do that somebody would, would call you because they knew that you would get it done, probably. So thank you. And, and like you said, I think Jason, meeting, because it, it was unanimous. It was, I think, a surprise to people and the fact that something could come together that quickly with the limited resources and the environment we're in and all of that. Just tremendous work out of him, tremendous work out of you, and, and obviously those departments that, you know, Public Works, they, they love decorating the square and being involved. Just behind the festival, I think it's probably their favorite time of year. Mic's on mute. So, but again, and I don't want to leave anybody out, but everybody did a, a great job and just really appreciate the leadership from, from you and Go Polk City and then our Parks Department, Jason, and everybody else. So great work. And and again, really just thank you for, you know, all the stuff that, that you do going above and beyond. Much appreciated.
Yeah, I like some of those comments. I mean, I love the square lighting, but then this year when we had the parade, it's like, well, I love the parade. So now what do we do next year? Because I want the square lighting like it's always been, but I want the parade again, because that was so cool. So you guys are going to have a challenge in front of you to figure out what to do next year. I'm hopeful that the world is back to normal, but that was an amazing event, and I know you guys put a ton of work into it. But I also want to thank the businesses that participated. You know, I, I thought, well, maybe this will be a small little thing, and there would be something, but man, they went all out and Bridget, I appreciate the reminder that they are hanging on by a, a thread. So for them to show up like that, you know, I just hope that everybody's able to continue supporting them because they make things like that extra special for our community. You know, all those businesses, they participate in fundraisers in the square lighting, in the Four Seasons Festival. So hang in their businesses and thanks, Bridget, for the reminder and for all that you do for them. You know, you have great events for our community, but yeah, you are a support system for a lot of them too. So thank you for all you do. And yeah, that, like I said, that was an amazing event and thoughts are with everybody that's having a challenging time, especially right now going into the holidays.
That's the more I can say that you guys have it. Just thank you so much. Your everybody, that, everything was fantastic, even as a parent of a twenty and twenty-two-year-old, there, we were all outside watching, and we thought it was really cool. And I can only imagine what those others were thinking. And it was the best way that we could have done anything, given the current, current circumstances. So it was really neat. So thanks. Everybody else said it very well.
Hey, Mike. So I do have one person that, on your department, who every year goes above and beyond, and I didn't get the opportunity to stand in the bandstand this year, and thank you guys. But Dennis, every year, has taken that square lighting and made it his own. And every single year, when we're ready to light those lights, he's standing there. And I swear I cross the street with him at the same time every single December when we do this. But you can tell that Dennis takes this, this particular project and it, and makes it his own. He takes ownership in this like nobody. And you, he's, he was more nervous down there than anybody that I've ever seen, walking around with his phone and the timer. So again, I try to thank them publicly every time we can, but you guys did a great job. They were working in the rain, trying to put all that stuff up on that Monday or that Friday, whatever it was. And, but, but again, not to take away from the rest of the people who are out there working, but boy, Dennis does a good job.
I'll let him know.
Anybody have anything else? If not, this is it till January eleventh.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have some news to share with you and the council. I have two people that are stepping down from officer's positions. And I'd like to publicly thank both of them for their service. One is Dan Govins, is going to step down from Assistant Chief to firefighter, paramedic. If I can use his words, time has become a precious commodity, so I can honor that. I, I, I think the jobs that are required from our officers is very time consuming. It's definitely above and beyond. Just not to downplay responding to calls, but it's more. And then Captain Magridet, our training officer, is stepping down the first of the year as well, and he has similar reasons as well. So I'm sad that we're losing those two assets and, and yet it's an opportunity for some of our youth to step up and, and assume some of those roles and, and and, and try something maybe new and different. So as, as sad as I am that we're losing a couple of really good assets, I, I think it's also a good opportunity for, for some of the, some of the ones that are willing and ready to take that next step forward. So. But I thought it was important to share that with you. If you'll join me in, in thanking them, share that with them. They both have been great assets. I think Dan Govins shared with me that he's been on, I know he's been on the department twenty years. Of those twenty years, nineteen has been an officer. So literally almost his entire career, he's went above and beyond. So I'm, I think Matt's been in his position for four to five years, and, and I appreciate both of their services. They've done a good job and sorry to see him go, but definitely understand where they're at.
I now echo your comments. Thank you for sharing that with the group. And thank them for everything, too.
The service, yes. Thank them both.
Yeah, thank, thanks, Chief, for, for sharing that. I, I got a couple of other things, too, but I don't want to give everybody else a chance to, to weigh in on that, too. But great guys, ton of service. give anybody else a chance to, to weigh in on that too. But great guys, ton of service.
Those are the things that make Polk City a great place, guys like that.
So did you say you had a couple of other things, Rob, or are we?
Yeah, I, I, I just, yeah. So, um, first off, uh, coming off that discussion with Neighborhood Citizens Group, I, I think you know, communication is one of those things that's ever evolving. And so appreciate the discussion. I, I struggle with, same time we talked about it last time, where to go from here. And I'm sure Chelsea's shaking her head because that's where she wanted direction. And that's the one thing that we didn't probably give her, but, um, you know, I definitely think that there, there are ways to, to make some improvements there. So appreciate their willingness to do that. And hopefully we can figure out a way to do it. Um, I did want, so we had, uh, our, uh, Parks meeting and, and there have been other resignations and, and, um, probably not, um, I did those as I showed, but I did want to say a couple of words about Holly. Um, and I don't know if it was in there, but uh, in the packet yet, but, but she expressed her desire to, to move off committee. And, and I just, I, I appreciate that group. It's been fun being, uh, their liaison this year and, and, um, I wish it was different circumstances, obviously, but, um, Holly in particular, I, I got to know Holly, um, when she started, uh, cleaning up the square and, and, and working literally in the dirt, uh, planting flowers and stuff. And, you know, not that she didn't have anything else going on, like having a baby, uh, and and some close major life events, she, she did that as well as, um, as well as serve on Parks Board. So, um, wanted to recognize her and, 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 uh, you know, everybody in that group does a, does a really good job, but sad to see her go, recognize that. That sometimes it's just that time, uh, as, as Jim kind of mentioned too. So, um, there, there'll be other people that'll step in and, and, uh, yeah. So, uh, and then, you know, last May of the year, I did want to kind of, I was preparing, meaning reflecting on a number of things. And, and I feel like this year, in spite of all the obstacles and, you know, meeting like being one of them, um, we've accomplished a lot. And so I, I really want to thank the department heads, um, and Chelsea, um, for our, our, unfortunately, a lot of the things that we got done were, were problem solving and fixing things. And, uh, you know, with everything this year, it wasn't maybe the best time to do that. But nonetheless, I, I just think, and that's, you know, kind of why I was meandering there with my rambling, no point, uh, uh, second subdivision that like, that's just an example of a big of something that I think we made a big change with regarding the, um, what I think most people want, uh, out of subdivisions. And, and so, um, it's just something that, that I think is really impactful foundational step. So, um, I really appreciate all the time and effort, um, from everybody this year in spite of everything that we've had to deal with. And um, just really do, uh, thank everybody and, and, and enjoy the process for the most part and working with them. It's, um, it's not been the best, but it's, it's still been, uh, an enjoyable year to work and follow you. Thank you.
Ron, would you like to be the last to call this particular year to, to close?
Well, yes, I would. If, if I could close the whole work, close, close the whole operation. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Have a good holiday.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Spoil them kids and grandkids. Oh, I guess I'm the only one with great kids.